One, we're gonna go ahead and call this session to order, the regular council meeting at 6:30. Looks like 6:32 actually. And we have Councilman Eric Shine is gonna lead us in invocation tonight. Please remain standing after we rise for the pledge of allegiance.
Heavenly Father, we just thank you so much for this evening, and Lord, we just thank you for the blessings that you bestowed on this city. But we just ask you to be with us here this evening as we make decisions, and Lord, definitely be with our emergency workers as they're out in the field, and keep them safe. In your glorious name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Clerk, please call the roll call.
Thomas Evers?
Yes.
Eric Shine?
Here.
Matthew Jaeger?
Here.
Jeanette Lassiter?
Here.
Keith Williams?
Here.
Kendall Stuckey?
Here.
Dean Bitner?
Here.
Ronnie Breland?
Here.
Mayor, we have Coram.
Thank you. We're going to amend the agenda on a few items tonight. Jeanette, would you like to present those, please?
Yes. First of all, there's a matter that has been going on for six years that it's an ordinance, which I believe the council has a copy of, an ordinance accepting the dedication of Billy Acres Road into the city of Lowell, Arkansas. And the reason it's coming before us now is because it has been being worked on for six years, and we were waiting for one signature. And that one signature has finally been affixed to the map, I think it is called. And we could very quickly look at this and get it out of the way as far as a business matters. So I am asking that we amend the agenda to include this after the, as item four on the agenda. And do we want to do these separately or together?
We can vote on them separately.
Okay. That's my motion.
Second. Second by Kendall Stuckey. Roll call, please. Any discussion?
Thomas Evers?
Yes.
Eric Shine?
Yes.
Matthew Jaeger?
Yes.
Jeanette Lassiter?
Yes.
Keith Williams?
Yes.
Kendall Stuckey?
Yes.
Dean Bitner?
Yes.
Ronnie Breland?
Yes.
Motion to amend the agenda to include accepting dedication of Billy Acres Road as item four under new business is approved. Okay.
Thank you.
The other request I have is to amend the agenda and putting it as item five is a mystery item. It's to accept the resignation of a council member, and I was advised by council that I could announce it as it was Mr. Colonel Mustard in the conservatory with a pipe. So you have the mystery before you, and it will be made more clear as item five if you so choose.
A second. We have a motion by Jeanette to receive his resignation tonight. With a second by Eric Shine. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
If opposed, like a sign. Thank you. That brings us to our consent agenda items. You have before you in your packets. And is everyone getting your packets and your email in time for you to review them? Well, I know we do our best to get them out on time, so hopefully that's working well. We do have our council minutes from the last meeting, July 16th, and also our financial statement from our finance director, so review those for a minute. Ask any questions, comment, any corrections you might want to make.
I would like to commend our city clerk for doing that verbatim transcription of a long discussion.
Do you want to need to review them any longer?
Mister Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
That we approve the consent agenda as presented?
We have a motion by Jeanette. Second. Second by Ronnie Breland. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay? Thank you. That brings us to time of public forum. Public forum is a time for those in the audience tonight to present things to the council up to three minutes. And we'll open that at 6:39. We have Annalise Bacon here tonight, so please come forward, state your name for the microphone, please.
Good evening. My name's Annalise Bacon. I'm a lawyer in Rogers, Arkansas. I represent Mobile Minis, Inc. Mobile Minis has been trying to get a conditional use permit on 701 South Bloomington. There's already an existing conditional use permit that the Planning Commission approved a few months ago for a pull-in, for a salvage yard, basically. We are wanting, if you're familiar with PODs, like the POD storage units, we're wanting to store Mobile Minis, which are a little bit larger than PODs, storage units on that facility. We went through all the conditions to go before the Planning Commission last night. There were two members of the Planning Board, Commission Board, not present, and the vote was three-two in our favor, but we have to have actually four to get the conditional use permit. So I'm asking that tonight either the city council, I'm going to obviously appeal the Planning Commission's decision, so I'm asking that the council either take it up tonight or, in the alternative, have a special hearing. Because we can't wait until, I guess, the next council meeting to decide whether we stay here or in Springdale. We've actually already been approved for a lot in Springdale and South Thompson, but the lot in Bloomington is, we prefer this much better to the lot in Thompson, so we would prefer to stay in Lowell.
Yes, sir.
Mister Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I just have a question about this. What was on that lot previously was a bunch of stored trailers and trucks that didn't move, that didn't have a conditional use permit to do so. What's the difference between what was happening there and these storage containers?
The major concern, and I attended that meeting last night, was the height. They were asking for these containers to be stacked three-high, and some of the other conditional use permits that the city has granted in our history, we have had some issues with the height of stacks and stacking and that type of thing.
Yeah, those still haven't been addressed either.
And so we are, of course, very precautious with any conditional use that we would grant. There was, on their part, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, willingness to go to two containers high rather than three.
Correct.
Which would bring the height down to 20 feet or a maximum of two containers. And there was also a condition of somewhat limiting their hours on Saturday from 7:00 AM to noon, or was that 2:00?
That's right, 7:00 to noon.
7:00.
On occasional Saturdays, if we were behind in the contracts. We've contracted with...
And that, Chris Sullivan might want to, Chris, why don't you come up just a moment and just answer any other questions the council may have since you led that meeting last night?
To answer your question, Eric, the reason that we requested, or that when the gentleman from Mobile Minis called me and asked about these containers, I did not find anything in our schedule of uses that permitted these containers in light industrial zone. So I asked them to come before the Planning Commission to request a conditional use, and that's what they did last night.
Okay. Just, basically, it's a trailer without wheels, so...
Correct. That is exactly right.
And that's what we have all up and down in that same areas. We have FedEx and other trucking industries, and that was kind of where I was looking at that.
You are correct. This is the overlay district. When it, the overlay district was established in 2006, I'm not really concerned about those other places. When Mobile Mini called me, I was concerned about 701 South Bloomington. So that's what we addressed last night.
So what would the height of three containers be? 30 feet, is that what I'm understanding?
Yes, sir.
What's the height of a standard semi with wheels on it?
27 and a half?
11.6 max.
11.6.
I was gonna say 13 max.
Tractor trailers have absolutely nothing to do with what we're discussing.
I'm just trying to go into his comment about the trailer.
Yeah, and that's, is exactly the issue. Tractor trailers have nothing to do with what we're talking about.
Before we get to...
Yeah, I think we need to stop and see if whether we want to allow this to be on the agenda tonight, so.
We can't.
And she's addressing us with a public forum and asking us to look at this. And so, Tom, would you make a comment about what the process is?
Yes, sir. I think Annalise has brought her appeal to the proper form. That is, your ordinances provide that when a CUP is denied to an applicant at the Planning Commission, they can come to the city council and appeal. Variances can't do that, but CUPs can. And so she's here, the problem we have as a council, you have as a council tonight, is you can't have the hearing to hear her appeal until certified mail has gone out 10 days in advance of that appeal hearing.
Public notification.
And notice and an opportunity to be heard is the fundamental right in land use, is I have notice of my land changing and I have a right to be heard in front of the forum that's gonna make the decision. So I'm gonna advise you guys to adhere to that 10 days. I think that you heard, you know, Ms. Bacon make a request, if you're not gonna hear it tonight, could you set a meeting between now and the third Tuesday in September, when, so they could make a decision business-wise about whether they're gonna have to go to a lot that they're holding in or trying to get into, maybe in Springdale or here. And I think that you are free to do that. You can hear the appeal at a special call meeting if you choose to do so, but it would have to be about 13, 14 days out from tonight, assuming Chris could get her notices out tomorrow.
I'd just like to point out, too, that they are under time constraints as far as making their business decision, and so that's why I believe that she's asking for an earlier hearing. And, you know, we kind of have to evaluate, do we want to accommodate them with a special call meeting, which will be a cost to the city, or how much would we value, I guess we have to weigh and value how much we would want to lose their business if that happened too, so.
Well, if she's asking to be heard, I certainly don't have a problem with giving her the opportunity to be heard, even at a special call meeting. It's what we're paid for. So with that said, I'm trying to get the calendar work on my new phone here, y'all forgive me. Two weeks from tonight would be what the...
Be...
Well, the problem is, that's the Tuesday following Labor Day. I'll be here. Is, Mayor, would it be appropriate to make a motion to schedule?
I think first we probably need to, which, vote if we're willing to call a special session.
Yeah, that's my question.
And then if we vote to have a special session, then set a date.
Okay. With that said, I make a motion that we call a special hearing some, two weeks out, and then we'll set the date if everyone agrees.
A second. I have a second by Eric. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like a sign? Okay, so we have agreed that we are going to have a special session concerning Mobile Mini Incorporated and these storage units and the conditional use permit, okay? In approximately two weeks, so now we need to set a time for that, so this young lady can know what time to prepare for.
Well, we have to have a here, a special, a notice of hearing.
Yes.
Hearing before the meeting.
So we'll need a date, so. I think you've got your calendar out, would you mind helping us decide a date?
The first available Tuesday will be...
That would be the third.
Yes, September 3rd.
And that would be the day after Labor Day.
I have no problem with the third. Does anyone else have a problem with the third?
Ms. Bacon, is that suitable?
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Mayor, make a motion that we call the special meeting to discuss this issue and this issue only on September the 3rd at 6:30 here in council chambers.
We have a motion.
Second.
Second by Thomas Evers. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like a sign? Thank you.
Can we have some information on the business as far as?
Right.
Maybe the parcel, the shape of the parcel, and maybe how close it is to the road? I know we, it is part of the overlay district, and so just to know a little bit more about the site and...
Which, you mean...
No, no, no. And the council, in the next meeting.
I would second that. Could we get like a little packet a couple of days before? Yes.
Absolutely.
Like the week before with operate, what they're gonna do, I mean, I know it's PODs, but, thank you. If I may, Ms. Bacon, photographs of existing locations would be good. Folks, these are shipping containers, they're not little PODs, so be mindful of that. Ms. Bacon, colors and a stack of two, a stack of three, those photographs would be helpful, please.
And also, which side, is it on the north side or south side of Apple Blossom?
It's on Bloomington.
Or Bloomington.
The property, wouldn't I have picture of the property tonight, do I don't think we're preparing?
Yes, right.
Okay. Might pass this down as we continue.
In front, it's Bloomington, but it also has an exit on Lincoln Street.
I have a question.
So you have something you can at least take home with you tonight, so go ahead, Tom.
Forgive me for interrupting, but I'm gonna just caution you about having a hearing, like a mini hearing, tonight. The whole idea of the notice and opportunity to be heard is that anybody else who might want to come to the meeting can be here, so if you have, you know, efficient questions, of course, regarding logistics, I'd go ahead, but I would wait and have your questions in public at your special call meeting.
So everyone has a map of the property that we're talking about. Everyone has that on the council, and so we'll reserve our meeting time for, and Chris will be getting to all the council members the same things that she passed out to the Planning Commission that's already had a role in on this.
I'd just like to mention one thing.
Yes, ma'am.
As one of the two council members here last night, we looked at photos of the existing property, and just to clarify, we're not talking about those cute little iPod, our little PODs that you see when people are moving and cracking stuff in. It's not quite like that.
Ms. Bacon?
We'll discuss all that at the special session, so. Did you want to address, Ms. Bacon?
Please, sir. Regarding the photographs, photographs of your existing property on East Robinson and Springdale would be great, so.
On East Robinson and Springdale.
Yes, that will give us an idea of what we can anticipate here, so I'd like to see photographs of your existing operations there on East Robinson. I think that will certainly reflect how you'll do business here as well.
Absolutely.
Chris, can we get photos of the Lincoln side?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate you coming tonight and making your appeal to the council.
Great, thanks, Chris.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Chris, if it's possible to produce minutes from your Planning Commission meeting, I know that's maybe asking too much.
And last night?
Yes.
Yeah.
Even if they're unofficial, you know, just to have a draft.
In the packet, you mean?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, right.
Thank you.
Thank you. I believe that's the only name that we have on a public forum tonight.
Closing at what time?
So, we're gonna close public forum, somebody help me out with that clock up there, what is it?
5:52, according to that clock.
Six...
Or 6:52, rather.
7:52.
Okay.
The other number.
6:52, okay.
Two minutes over by satellite.
On your agenda tonight, we've added a new subtitle of projects that we felt would be good to kind of bring everyone up to date on, so we've actually listed this, just city projects and updates.
I'm sorry. Can I ask, Tom, before we move on, which I know we already have, am I notifying 300 feet from the boundary of the property of an appeal?
I don't, I don't think so.
No.
I'm not sure, but I don't think so.
Okay. I'll get back with you on that.
And I think I'd like to hear from Ms. Bacon about that, too, what she thinks, to make sure we're all sort, just like we did with the...
I mean, we, I know to put a notification in the paper, and we'll put it, of course, put it on our website. I'm trying to figure out the notifications, I was just having this, okay?
We'll have a chance to talk about that.
We'll discuss that.
Tonight.
Sounds like you got a meeting after the meeting. Okay. Okay. Tom, you're first on the agenda for city projects and updates, a status report on the trail property acquisition.
As you all know, you voted to condemn five separate parcels, four different owners, and we've got those prepared, and there's always a hope, as I'm sure you've been reading before, that in the interim, after people realize, yep, the city's about to take this property, I may as well go ahead and make a deal, that there'll be a deal that will get done. My understanding is that none of the properties have changed their minds, and if you look at yours, if you recall when you guys went through them, they are significantly higher in value than the holdouts that we've seen in other cities. These are just much, much higher values. One, in fact, produced a sort of a rival appraisal. So we are gonna go ahead and obtain possession orders, orders of possession this week, so that the work can start, and I'm afraid we're gonna be litigating those. The good news is, again, the money is all reimbursed to the city, wherever we spend, but we'll have to put some money out there to deposit in the court. We were hoping to avoid that, but that's gonna have to get done now, so that'll be done, I think, in the next two days, and so work can get going. And then you'll, unfortunately, you'll be involved in litigation process, not personally, but as a city. And then I'm a little unclear as to whether attorney's fees get completely reimbursed, but that's the indication so far, is that they'll be reimbursed as well.
Anyone have a question for Tom concerning that? Next on our update is some improvements we've been making at Wardnell Park. I don't know if you've visited out there recently, but we've got several improvements that we've made to the lake and some walking paths. Jim, would you mind just coming up and telling why we're closing down the trail temporarily?
We're gonna be closing the trail down just temporarily for two days to get it seal-coated, to get the asphalt redone, just like we're doing on some of our streets out there for sort of the last several more years. And that's basically, I mean, I closed it for two days, they told me probably a day, but I'd rather have it for two days, 'cause if you don't, people get out there and start walking in it and get some stuff all over their shoes, and then Ms. Melonie gets phone calls.
Jim has done some improvements to the lake out there this summer, as well as some walking bridges where, how many of those we got now? Three? And I think I counted three.
Three. We got three of them, new walking arch bridges out there.
Go for some of the ditches. We've added a trail over from the senior center over to the center of the park.
Yes, we have. Now, we ain't got that asphalt yet, but I got grit and stuff on it, so.
So if you've not been out there in a while, there's been several improvements we've made. Thank you, Jim. Appreciate that. Third item under city projects and updates is the Gold Springs Road interchange improvements at Highway 264. As you know, we're in contract with HTD and with Crafton and Toll as engineers on that project. I received a call from Lori Tudor today with HTD, and she informed me that the nature of the project is going to be revisited a little bit and revised the contract. They want the city to carry the project on out to bidding, at the point that the bidding is let, the state will choose a contractor, oversee the construction, or possibly choose to construct it themselves and then inspect it. So that's kind of in the works right now. Like I said, that was news that I received today. These improvements include the extensions of North and South Gold Springs from where the signalization light will be, the bottleneck between Interchange 78 and the intersection comes five to two lanes, and also coordinating the Razorback Greenway into that design work, so it'll be quite a project once it starts. Next on the agenda...
Mayor, can I ask one question?
Yes, yes, sir.
Has there been any dates set for that? Any plemaria on the bid date or...
What's holding it up more than anything right now is the new recharge study that's being done, and as soon as that decision has been made, whether projects are continuing to have an accumulative effect on the blind cave fish, and we've already been notified that the Indiana gray bat is not affected or impacted by this, any of these projects going on, so that was good news. But we have probably, I wanna say 12 to 15 months. So goes faster, great, so we're ready. Item four under city projects and updates, we have the East Apple Blossom drainage update, and this is something that you may or may not be aware of, but we've had tremendous ongoing water issues down east. Of course, the rains through August and the spring has revealed a lot of drainage issues for the city, but this one has been a reoccurring one that has given Bethel Heights and also Lowell some fits at times. So Rick Stone, would you like to come kind of explain to council what we're looking at? Patrick, if you could pull that slide up that we gave you earlier for this, then they'll have an understanding of where it's at. This is not a decisional item, we're just wanting to make you aware of a project that we're moving forward with Bethel Heights on.
This is, like I said, East Apple Blossom over towards Old Wire. Everybody's probably familiar with the little pond there on the north side. The existing pipe going to that pond, coming from Bethel Heights, is a little too small to carry all the water, so they're proposing to put some box culverts in just to the west, leaving that pipe in, so we'll continue feeding that pond and not disrupt that and carrying the bulk of the water to the west of that pipe and to the north, carrying it out up to Puppy Creek. It'll be a cost share project with Bethel Heights.
In doing that, Rick, would it create that same little bump that they've created out here in Monroe, would it go back to being a fairly flat road?
No, it should remain pretty much the same road profile it has now. They're just two-foot-high boxes, but they're six-foot wide.
We're, I and the mayor of Bethel Heights, Jeff Hutchison, have been meeting on this regularly, probably for about the past year. They're the ones that have been working with Steve Hesse in design on this project. We're gonna be putting in an application to see if we can get some state funding for it. We are looking at, what's the bottom figure on that jointly, Rick?
I didn't bring that with me. Jointly was...
It's around $180,000, it looks like.
Yeah.
And our share of it's gonna be approximately 40 to 45, it looks like at this point.
And that's a 20% contingency ending.
Any questions? We just wanted to make you aware of some of the things that's coming our direction, so if no other questions, we can move on with our agenda.
This is gonna feed into Puppy Creek?
Yeah, which is where the water's going now, it's just gonna continue on its course. It won't, yeah, it'll come by your house, but it's doing that now.
Same water.
Same water you've been getting.
Twice as much water, twice as fast.
It's gonna fill up faster, Dean.
Thank you, Rick, for bringing that report to us. Appreciate that. That brings us to old business, which we have none, so we move right in to new business. Item number one... under new business tonight is a resolution appropriating funding for expenses connected with the Johnson Property Park. So, Jerry Hudlow is gonna be coming up to describe or to answer any questions regarding this. This is necessary for some of the legal conveyance documents, so on and so forth. Jerry, would you give a little bit further explanation of why this is necessary?
As far as engineering firm to perform an environmental assessment of the property as we start moving and looking at developing the property. And everybody knows which property I'm talking about, the Johnson Property.
Yes, sir. Looked like you have a question, Dean.
I have a motion.
You have a motion? Okay. I like motions.
I make a motion to accept the resolution as presented.
Motion made by Dean Bitner, second by Ronnie Breland. Roll call, please.
Jeanette Lassiter, yes. Keith Williams?
Yes.
Dean Bitner?
Yes.
Matthew Jaeger?
Yes.
Kendall Stuckey?
Yes.
Ronnie Breland?
Yes.
Eric Shine?
Yes.
Thomas Evers?
I'd like to say yes with a question. We are gonna get bids for different companies to do this survey and all the testing and whatnot. So, I'm a yes, yeah.
Motion to approve the res-
Well, let me address that. This is a project that's being led by Bethel Heights. The construction bidding, I'm sure, will be put out to bid. They'll be put out to bid in such a way that they will be the ones accepting the bid and the construction, and we will be participating in that. So, we're somewhat.
Are you talking about the?
Not the drainage, but the Johnson Property.
Yeah, I thought we were talking about the donated land at the Johnson.
Okay, yeah. Yeah, shifted, yeah, okay. Shifted gears, okay. I'm sorry, Thomas. I've really got you confused.
Yeah, yeah. That's what I was, we were talking about that.
I thought it was great that Bethel Heights was gonna help us out on it, though.
Professional services, what the lawyers whispering in my ear cannot be bid, so.
Continuing?
Okay.
Okay, the motion to approve.
I'm still a yes, yeah.
Is that a yes, Thomas? Okay.
Motion to approve the resolution as presented is approved. Resolution is assigned number thirteen dash twelve. The resolution is assigned number one-three dash one-two.
Thank you, Lisbon.
You're welcome.
Number two on our new business tonight is a resolution. This one is appropriating funding for payment of repairs to the Lowell Police Department, two thousand and eleven Harley-Davidson Rogue King motorcycle. And this is to allow us to go ahead and get it repaired. Any questions? How to entertain a motion to approve the resolution as presented? We have a motion by Eric. I hear second.
Second.
Second by Matt. Our motorcycle enthusiast here. Any further discussion?
What would it cost for purposely, like, a new one for the police department?
A new Harley-Davidson? Gosh, I don't know. Randy?
Have you checked on that?
You wanna come and give me an adjusted price?
Thirty.
Sixteen? Approximately sixteen thousand dollars.
You're gonna.
Well, it's obvious this motorcycle was in some type of collision.
Yes, this is, this is one that needed to be repaired after an incident.
Well, I'm looking at spending almost eleven thousand dollars on it to repair it.
I thought they usually total it at seventy percent, don't they? Especially on cars.
And you're gonna, I mean, I'd just send by a new one for sixteen as to spend eleven for.
Sixteen thousand is not gonna be quit. That's gonna be a.
Well, one of the things, too, we're talking about a motorcycle before you outfit it completely for police work.
Yes.
Radios and sirens and.
Right.
All types of things.
We have an insurance check for that amount of money already in the bank. So, this is not, we're not spending general fund money. We're spending the insurance money to repair it.
Okay.
Mayor, you already have a motion.
Yeah, I already have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I call for the question.
Okay, thank you, Jeanette. Roll call, please.
Kendall Stuckey?
Yes.
Jeanette Lassiter?
Yes.
Matthew Jaeger?
Yes.
Ronnie Breland?
Yes.
Eric Shine?
Yes.
Keith Williams?
Yes.
Thomas Evers?
Yes.
Dean Bitner?
Yes.
Motion to approve the resolution as presented is approved. Resolution is assigned number one-three dash one-three. Resolution is assigned number thirteen dash thirteen.
Thank you. This brings us to item three on our agenda, which is another resolution. This one is authorizing the mayor of the, in the city clerk of the city of Lowell, Arkansas to enter into a contract with Garver LLC for engineering services on the north Dixie Land sewer extension and appropriating one hundred twenty-five thousand dollars for payment of engineering services. What this is mainly dealing with is getting some more site-ready lots along Dixie Land to attract new businesses and development. So, this is part of our economic development strategy, to invest in that property now and then be compensated later through an ordinance that we will be asking you all to approve later, once the development occurs on this property. Chris Button with Garver Engineering is here to answer any questions at all that you might have tonight concerning this. But I think this is a good thing for our city to move in this direction, and that's why the council has it before them tonight.
And I guess we also have.
Go ahead and summarize what this all of them.
If we could pull up that map, I'll try to explain it a little bit better.
Hard to see the outlines, isn't it? North, north is to the right. What we're seeing right here is the five forty interchange and five forty here. We've got Monroe Avenue right here. I apologize for the city, but essentially, we've got a little list station right here, kind of at the southeast corner of the interchange. And we've got up here, north, this is Oakwood. Right here, north of Oakwood, that's the city of Lowell, city of Rogers, Dixie Land. Five forty right there is all spring water utility service area. And it's kind of a two-part project, essentially from right, right here. Or Oakwood, Oakwood, there's no sewer service out there, period. In order to extend that sewer service, you have to increase the capacity from the Lowell List Station up to Dixie Land, same intersection where the new water source is going. But that increased capacity right there will allow for us to extend the sewer core for about thirty-three hundred feet. And it also accommodates, we have some capacity issues for other sewer lines to tie into that same line and go up through the lanes left through Puppy Creek. But that upgrade's needed, not only for Dixie Land, but for other development on the east side of town. That's about it. Do we have any questions on?
Well, I guess my question would be, this twelve hundred feet that it talks about, I mean, how much of, how much will be remaining on that road to have sewer put to it eventually?
Yeah. The highway department's in the process of moving all the utilities for the five forty interchange right now. And part of those interchange improvements are to extend Monroe Avenue east of Dixie Land. So, another track. Right now, they're moving utilities. And then after all the utilities are removed, they'll issue, you know, advertised bids for the interchange improvements. We wanna get in there with that sewer line before the highway department does. It's gonna cost ten thousand less to do it now for a change on the road liner. But that eleven hundred feet that you're referring to is from Lowell List Station up across Dixie Land, the capacity issue thirty-three hundred feet from, or the sewer stops on Dixie Land right here, north of Oakwood.
Are you going to smaller height?
The existing pipe right now from the Lowell List Station at Dixie Land is a fifteen-inch gravity sewer. We need to get about twenty-four. Most cost-effective way for us to increase that capacity, not to put a new line, but a van sole line. It's not that old, but it's relatively good condition. It's for us to put a parallel line to keep the interest going.
You said Oakwood. I think you pointed kind of where, I can't remember.
The Mills?
Yeah.
Just crosses over?
I guess Mills on the west side of five forty.
Yeah. You were sure, you were over at the Links, you said, north.
Yeah.
Okay, okay. Now, there won't be any type of disruption for the neighborhoods in that area as far as the utilities or as far as the sewer or anything? I mean, I.
Only at your house.
I don't believe there's any.
Only in my house.
There's not any boring on this project, Chris, or is there?
Because Dixie, because for traffic control and safety reasons, we will be boring Highway two sixty-four. The state allows that, and it's not worth the traffic control cost and potential for safety. And on Dixie Land, we are gonna bore that, just 'cause that is a new road. We don't wanna tear it up.
Yeah. That was my next question.
What about this extra cost that you have in here? What all, could it consist of, I mean?
Yeah, I don't know if I see what extra cost you're referring to, but the one hundred and twenty-five thousand essentially covers us for surveying, conceptual design, producing a conceptual opinion of probable costs, detailing final design plans, preparing property acquisition documents for easements, advertising this project with bids, awarding the construction contract, preparing the construction contract, and managing the construction contract and part-time construction observation. So, essentially, we're doing everything. There's pricing additional services that aren't included in this project, but they are anticipated at the same time.
What specifically are you referring to?
The owner will, says the owner will reimburse the engineer for abstractor, which is estimated to be approximately four thousand dollars, but may exceed this estimate.
What page are you on, Ronnie? Just for.
Three point two on page one, I believe, designing property surveys. Correct? There's a third paragraph. There's two point two.
Three point two, and then right above it is, it's got another one.
Yeah, there's two services that Garver does not provide that we will subcontract with. And one of those services is utility markings, part of the Arkansas One cost system that we're required to do. And we'll pass that direct cost on to the city of Lowell. Another service that Garver does not do is record researcher abstractor. And we're planning on using the LEAT title at a Lowell to do our record research for our property acquisition, easement acquisition documents. And those are estimated values, but if anything, they're probably a little high.
No. We're hiring you to go out and get bids for people to do the job.
Yes, sir.
That's common with these engineering projects on title work and things like that.
What happens? I seen in here, what happens if it goes over the two hundred and fifty-seven hours or the ninety days?
Essentially, what we have is we've assumed a ninety calendar day construction contract from issuing notice to proceed to when the contractor has final completion of the project. And in part of that construction contract, if he fails to complete his construction contract within that ninety calendar days, there's liquidated damages assessed, typically to cover engineering fees beyond what we originally anticipated. Part of this project, we're providing four hours a day, five days a week. Anything beyond that will be additional services or extra work. At the same time, the contractor will be responsible for payment of that additional time as liquidated damages to the city of Lowell to reimburse for us for that additional time beyond the construction contract time.
So, we'll have to pay you?
Yes, sir. If, if, if the time goes beyond the contract performance time.
And of course, he's contracted with that stipulation of liquidated damages, and he knows that he'll be paying the city.
Essentially, the contractor will be paying the city of Lowell, and the city of Lowell will be reimbursing us.
I have a question for Mr. Hudlow. This is coming out of the general fund reserve?
Yes, ma'am.
And how will that leave us as far as our reserve account?
We're in pretty good shape right now. In fact, I stacked a little bit of cash back for our, our reserve this month, if you'll notice. The reserve account, it's up a couple hundred thousand dollars.
Part of the perks of increased revenues.
One of the questions I get asked as mayor quite a bit from the general public is, when are we gonna get our restaurant row? I don't know that this would be a restaurant row, but I know that if we provided sewer down through Dixie Land, that it would be very attractive, I would think, for restaurants to, to know that they could build there earlier rather than later because these services were provided.
We've got Dairy Queen and Sonic and.
Well, you got that.
I'm not, I'm not knocking Dairy Queen or Sonic. I mean, I love those places.
Very goddamn.
My waistline shows that and proves that.
And on the other side, we got Taco Bell and Subway.
But one of the things I get asked about a lot is, when are we gonna get some set-down restaurants and things like that? Somebody had mentioned Joe's Crab Shack. I don't know if I've ever been to one, but we gotta provide space, and we're gonna have to be proactive if we're going to entice some of these franchises to come in here. And we will be, at one point in the future, be reimbursed for these expenses we're laying out now when that property is developed.
We're gonna go ahead and start the rumor about Joe's. We're gonna go ahead and get that started right away.
Mayor, I make a motion that we.
Go ahead. Tom's gonna do it.
I have a motion by Ronnie Breland to prove this resolution that has been presented to the council. Do I have a second on that?
Second motion for Joe's Crab Shack.
I think we'll just take, need a second, Eric.
Mayor, I do have a question when, when you have time.
Okay. Any further discussion or question before we vote on this? 'Cause it is, I realize it's a large sum of money, but the way I'm looking at it, we're investing in future development of Dixie Land, which will result in increased revenue and sales tax. And I know Jerry will appreciate that comment, so.
Mayor, if I may.
Yes, Dean.
Certainly, I mean, no disrespect to Garver and Associates. Y'all have always done a fine job for us, and we appreciate that certainly. But I'm assuming that, that other firms were looked at or considered in some measure?
Not on this particular project. Garver Engineering is so familiar with our sewer infrastructure. And we have always found the pricing to be so competitive that we felt it was not necessary to go do any further shopping. There's a lot of projects that they're familiar with, with our sewer particularly, that we use them pretty consistently.
Yes, sir.
On utilities. So, we did not, so.
Mayor, if I could, just so the mayor will verify what he said, I've actually asked him about the restaurant row as well. And I was shocked to learn, I guess, previous administration, when they did the road, the mayor explained to me that they had actually made the road a little narrower and foregone putting the sewer in there. So, I'm all for putting sewer in there to, you know, stimulate that growth there, so.
Absolutely.
I just kinda echoed Dean's concern on the, the kind of costs of it, and just keeping an eye on going forward, how much, how much funding. 'Cause I'm just, as you look through and you see some of the administrative fees and things like that, some of those, when it comes down to it, may end up stacking up over time that may be good to bid out. Not that, you know, that won't get corrected.
And sometimes these projects come in well below the projected cost as well. We've seen that as well happen on projects. Of course, I'm not an engineer, but we use good engineers on our city projects. So, Chris, we're elated at your helping with this project.
Thank you, sir, and thank you all.
No other.
Call for a question.
Discussion, and we have called a question. Roll call, please.
Ronnie Breland?
Yes.
Keith Williams?
Yes.
Matthew Jaeger?
Yes.
Eric Shine?
Yes.
Thomas Evers?
Yes.
Jeanette Lassiter?
Yes.
Dean Bitner?
Yes.
Kendall Stuckey?
Yes.
Motion to approve the resolution as presented is approved. Resolution is assigned number one-three dash one-four. Resolution number thirteen dash fourteen.
Yes. Thank you. I feel like applauding that for some reason.
It's a good thing.
I think it's a great thing. I really do. So, that brings us to our amended subject tonight, item number four. That brings us to our amended subject tonight, item number four, an ordinance accepting the dedication of Billy Acres Road into the city of Lowell, Arkansas. Chris, why don't you come up and take position there? And as she's coming, I just want to tell everyone what a tremendous job Chris has done in gaining the signatures that was required to make this happen. She spent many evenings chasing people down, and we appreciate your efforts on this, Chris. You did a great job.
Thank you. Patrick, would you go ahead and put the, I don't have a pot with me, thank you. I think most of you remember us talking about this a few months ago, and I appreciate the terrific introduction that Jeanette gave me when she was amending the agenda. That was fantastic. I think most of you guys will remember us talking about this. Like I said, if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them. Regarding Billy Acres, it was Billy Stanfield that just got out there and just really jumped on these signatures.
Is this your neighborhood?
I heard it was you.
Mayor, I make a motion, we accept the resi, I'm sorry.
Ordinance?
Make a motion, we place the ordinance on its first reading by title only.
Ooh, second. Is this a rules?
We have, you're going to entertain a motion, suspend the rule, that's what you put it.
Why would we do a first reading?
The ordinance on third and final reading. That's not what he said.
You know what, hold on, hold on. Is there a reason to expedite this?
No.
There's not a reason to expedite it. Just, no.
Hendricks?
You might ask our street department, I don't know.
Yeah, if they have a need out there, delay us getting out there.
They are waiting, it's not our street.
It's no secret, this has been going on for six years. I make a motion, we suspend the rules and place the ordinance on its third and final reading by title only.
Thank you.
Appreciate that, Dean, thank you. We have a second. Keith?
It was actually Kendall.
The second was by Kendall.
The case.
Okay. Any further discussion?
I just, my memory fades me a lot, but, and I asked this before, what about that water system out there? I mean, it has nothing to do with the road, but it's like, it's a, at the end of that cul-de-sac, I was looking at land over there at one time, that the person who owned that house with the green roof and the green little shed out there, they had to be approved through the state to service water to those citizens, didn't they?
Yes.
I'm just curious, how does that work going forward when people move, sell, die, whatever? I mean, it doesn't affect the road, but I'm just, wiring minds want to know, you know?
It's a part of the property ordinance.
So they have some kind of conditions in place that will establish the water and keep it going?
Correct. Yeah, it's a state mandated thing.
Okay.
Call a question.
That it? Called a question, roll call, please.
Thomas Evers? Thomas?
Thomas, you're up.
Yes.
Keith Williams?
Yes.
Ronnie Breeland?
Yes.
Matthew Jaeger?
Yes.
Kendall Stuckey?
Yes.
Eric Shine?
Yes.
Jeanette Lassiter?
Yes.
Dean Bitner?
Yes.
Motion to suspend the rule and place the ordinance on third and final reading by title only was approved. I will read the ordinance by title only. An ordinance accepting the dedication of Billy Acres Road into the city of Lowell, Arkansas.
Mr. Mayor, I move we adopt the ordinance as presented.
I have a motion by Jeanette, and a second by which one of you?
I did it this time.
Second by Keith. Roll call, please.
Dean Bitner?
Yes.
Ronnie Breeland?
Yes.
Jeanette Lassiter?
Yes.
Kendall Stuckey?
Yes.
Keith Williams?
Yes.
Matthew Jaeger?
Yes.
Eric Shine?
Yes.
Thomas Evers?
Yes.
Motion to approve the ordinance as presented is approved. Ordinance is assigned number nine-three-five. Ordinance number is nine-thirty-five.
Thank you. That brings us to our committee.
Nope.
Item number five.
Oh, item number five. The mystery.
Top secret.
Yes, okay. Item number five that we amended earlier. Oh, yeah. Which involves, I believe you, Matt.
Yep, yep, I am Colonel Mustard, I guess, tonight. So, I wanted tonight to tender my resignation from the position of alderman, having moved outside of the city limits of Lowell and outside of my ward, so therefore no longer, as resident of the ward, no longer serving in that capacity, so. And I would ask, moving forward with the city, while I'm not here, I do ask that they revisit some issues, especially one that's been brought up previously, I know many times, on some of the zoning issues, especially with mixed zoning. I hope that, you know, the city looks at mixed zones as something to pursue, because I think it would help some businesses that might otherwise have to go to other cities, since we don't have that ability right now, so.
Well, Matt, I know it's been a pleasure working with you, and we appreciate your willingness, your dedication, serve our community, and we're happy that you found a new home in Bentonville, but we're going to miss you, and we will have to officially receive his resignation.
Well, I have a question first. You are going to come back and take minutes for the ordinance committee?
I think it was deemed that you had to be a resident to serve on the ordinance committee, so.
No, just take notes.
Well, that's the duty of the secretary, though, that would do that, so.
You're resigning as that, too? All right.
I have a question to Jeanette.
No, she can't.
Well, I tell you what, Matt was always on top of those minutes, and he always got them out promptly and efficiently, and we did appreciate you serving on that committee, Matt.
All right, I move that we regretfully accept his resignation.
Second, we have a motion by Jeanette. And a second by Ronnie Breeland. On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? I can't vote, but I'm going to say aye.
So, Mayor, your procedure will be that, at the next regular meeting, you can appoint, since you've accepted the resignation, you officially have a vacancy now, you can appoint at the next regular meeting. If y'all want more time than that, I can advise that you can use the next meeting to have the vacancy declared, you know, officially, you can declare vacancy, but you certainly may appoint at the next regular meeting, and that's what the law would encourage you to do, which means that City Hall would, you know, get the word out, and you guys could get some information on folks who are interested and make an appointment. But again, if you want two months to do that, we can do that as well.
Tom?
I would like to do that.
Could the upcoming special meeting have its agenda amended? Can it include that as well? Just throw it out there.
You could certainly add, just looking at candidates, you could make an appointment at the next meeting, you could have some people in, but. Say, what I'd recommend, though, is that since it is an appeal, Matt, I would say probably stick to your appeal, because the people that are here will be dealing just with that appeal, and you don't want to concentrate on that appeal.
Tom, I hate to ask this question, but I'm going to. You know, other cities, you know, Springdale recently are still currently going through this. I mean, is it setting some kind of a precedent as far as like, maybe the people who ran for that position, since people got to vote on the people who didn't win the position, would those one or two or other candidates be considered in that, or is that not necessarily allowed?
They may absolutely be considered. You can consider anybody who lives in that ward who is eligible to serve in the position, and so that means they're a qualified elector. So any qualified elector who lives in that ward may be considered.
And we need to get the word out, too.
Yeah, and I think that we also need to stress the fact that we have a new ward map, and that we need to make sure that people are within the ward, because we've had some interest, but they were looking at the wrong map.
Yeah, I actually had planned on actually recommending somebody, but just shortly before this meeting, I actually found out that this person actually lives in a different ward by almost, you know, a matter of feet, it would seem, so.
Okay. Any other questions for our attorney while he's explaining the procedure for reinstalling our council member? Okay. Matt, we appreciate your service, we really do. That brings us to the ordinance committee report. Dean, would you like to?
Mayor, we have nothing to report, although I will recommend that we convene at six o'clock PM on Wednesday, September fourth, probably in the conference room, unless there's such a crowd that we need to move it to the council chambers.
Six PM.
Hold on a minute. Tom says he can be there, but that's okay. Six PM on the fourth, please.
Creating mixed use zone would be great.
Working on it, and high pile storage.
Okay. We have announcements now. Mike, you're the first on the agenda tonight with Northwest Arkansas Emergency Preparedness Fair. I know this was very successful last year. Why don't you brief us how this started, and how it's evolved, and its importance to our community?
This actually began as a small meeting, if you will, a small seminar-type deal where the Benton County Department of Emergency Management put together a presentation, gathered several sponsors as the years have gone on. And those of you who have the flyer, and I think everybody does, can see they have considerable support now. It's developed from strictly, originally, they just kind of talked about, in case you have a fire, do this, in case you have a tornado, do this. That was the original basis, and then they had several fire trucks, other emergency vehicles, ambulances, whatnot, that you could tour and meet the people and kind of see what it was all about. It's now evolved to the point where they have classes, seminars, presentations, and still all the original basics that they had as well. They have a wealth of information to pass on, education and information to pass on to the general public, and it's focused now more on awareness of situation than it is reaction to a situation, to be aware of what to look for, what to expect, and what to do when those occur. But it also talks a little bit about what to do after the events happen. There's opportunities to learn those type of things as well. I sincerely recommend to any of you who have any time at all on the seventh of September, that Saturday, to take an hour out of your day, or two hours out of your day, and visit this opportunity. It's something to really, really try to take advantage of. It can help, if it helps one person, it's worth it. If it helps a hundred, it's even more worth it, so. And not only encourage you all to do it, but encourage your neighbors as well, so.
It's pretty big. I actually went last year, and, I mean, I was shocked at how large it was, how many people attended, and how many booths there were. I took my daughter even, because they do child ID kits, I mean, it's pretty impressive.
Yeah, and the one thing that they've really expounded on in the last couple of years in particular is not just emergency, it's called emergency preparedness, but it's actually, they talk a lot about medical issues, how to deal with those types of things. Like I said, there's just a wealth of information that, if you can go to this and not learn anything, you went with closed eyes and closed ears, I mean, it's that simple.
Thank you, Mike, for this summary. We'll encourage everyone that can to go out, take an hour or two and go out and learn something, how to better protect your family and your community. That brings us to number two, Mount Hebron Road. We have, the rain has caused several delays, to say the least. School did open Monday, the Janey Dar Elementary School, students were able to get right in and right out, so they're working with the conditions out there very well. The road was closed for quite some time, several weeks. It's now reopened, however, it's nowhere near completion. I wish I could give you a date on it, but just Jim and I driving around, I would say we're looking at a minimum of forty-five days, aren't we, Jim? So, at least that. So if you travel Mount Hebron Road, be prepared to get your car dirty for a while, okay? McClure Expansion Project, Jimmy, would you like to come and explain what we're doing there?
As most of y'all are aware, we've been trying to get McClure expanded for several years, been going on. This year, we've really been on it. Thanks to Chris, she's really got on them. We have got all the right-of-ways but three. We, that's all we have. We actually got all right-of-ways as of today, she got the last one signed from the railroad tracks to seventy-one, so I'm going to be working with Chris, and we can go ahead and be getting that out and getting it ready to bid. So, y'all hopefully here within the next, what'd you say, sixty days?
Now, expansion's going from where to where?
Well, that's all going, the mayor's working right now with Springdale Water and Stuff. Springdale has done call sharing with us on water lines, when we had to remove water lines and shoreline. If they still stand with that, we are going to be able to hopefully go from seventy-one to Somerset. But if they don't call share with us, we may have to just do the water line to Somerset, but we can do the road from railroad tracks to seventy-one.
That'll be the first phase of it, and then our hope is to complete it all the way to OWR, which will eventually become the north-south corridor within the next three to four years, so. Okay, any questions for Jim? Thank you, Jim, for being here and giving that report. Chris Sullivan with a wayfinding signage, have you noticed any of the new signs going up along the highway? Would you like to give a brief summary of that, Chris? We had some problems with one or two of them, but we've got them up, so.
Yeah, we had a few problems with some utilities in the state right-of-ways. I didn't really have a lot to say, if you guys had any questions about them, I just wanted to make sure that everybody had seen them, seen their up. This is the first phase. Jimmy and I have to go out again September eleventh for phase two. I've been on the steering committee for these, for the city of Lowell, and I hope you guys like them. We'll have backs on them that have the stagecoach wheel, like I showed you guys earlier. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them, but I hope everybody's seen them, like them. You don't get lost now, this'll point you in the right direction in case you need help getting anywhere. No excuses for being late coming to City Hall. Okay?
Okay. I know Dean's itching to give one more announcement, is there any other announcement before we close tonight? Okay. Dean, what you got down there? I think I know.
Matt, you picked a good night to resign, it's ice cream night, ice cream night. Going to Dairy Queen when we're done, anybody wants to come along, I'll buy you your ice cream or your soda pop, cheeseburgers, you're on your own. Ice cream, ice cream.
Yeah, we were.
Just ice cream.
Yeah. The employee Christmas committee, Christmas party committee will also be meeting at Dairy Queen, too, so if you're part of that, yes, ma'am.
Yes, please.
So, we'll be having a meeting there, so.
And if you're there eating ice cream, you're welcome to have whatever input you like into the Christmas party, within reason, in case he's got it nailed down.
Any other word before we adjourn?
Mr. Mayor, I move we adjourn.
We have a motion by Jeanette to adjourn, and a second by Ronnie Breeland. On favor, say aye.
Aye.
No objections, we'll be adjourned at seven thirty-eight.
Don't drag your feet, if you're not there by eight o'clock, you're on your own. Twenty minutes.